I call to order the January 22, 2019 school committee meeting. It is 6:00 PM. This meeting is being both audio and videotaped. Is anyone else audio or videotaping this? I guess not, so let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll start with our roll call to my left.
Jake Brady, student rep.
Phil Fonseca.
Sarah Trullio.
Greg Reetels.
Rich Ficero.
Gordon Smith, superintendent of schools.
Paul Smith, Marcy Boucher.
Pamela Blair, assistant superintendent for business.
Kathy Salati, reporting superintendent.
Thank you very much. Let's go to item number two, approval of minutes. 2.1, approval of the January 7, 2019 executive meeting minutes. Do I have a motion?
I move to approve the January 7, 2019 executive meeting minutes.
Motion, I have a second.
Second.
Second, any discussion? All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Anybody against? Are we unanimous, Mr. Salati? 2.2, approval of the January 7, 2019 regular meeting minutes. Do I have a motion?
Oh, I have to abstain from the executive.
Okay, that's right. So is number one.
Sorry, it wasn't here. Yep.
We're to approve.
Wasn't on it? I'm sorry. My apologies. It was that I have abstained, right?
No. No. So we'll have to modify.
Yeah.
Do you want to take that vote again?
Yeah. Move to modify the, or approve the January 7, 2019 executive meeting minutes with modifications that Mrs. Marcy and Boucher was not present. And then the votes subsequent would be four to zero.
Excellent. Thank you.
Do you have a motion, I have a second.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Against? Okay, we'll set there. We okay now?
Yeah, we're good.
Consider 2.2, approval of the January 7, 2019 regular meeting minutes.
Move to approve the January 7, 2019 regular meeting minutes.
Have a motion, I have a second.
Second.
Thank you. Discussion? Once again, Mr. Salati, my God, that was wonderful that you captured as much as you did. It really was. What a gift. All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Are you unanimous? Okay, committee and subcommittee communication. Let's start with you, Ms. Marcy and Boucher.
Oh, I'm looking for times now, right? Hang on. Okay, so ELIF is having their gala coming up on, I'm sorry, I'm looking to get the exact date. It is the 9th of February.
Very nice. Is there a theme?
I don't think that there's a theme this year, no. They're just kind of going with, you know.
Winter ball or whatever.
Winter gala, winter ball, that kind of thing. They're not really doing the smaller silent auction items. We've got some, Mountain View actually has, Maple Shade actually has some really cool stuff where you can, if you do the auction, they've got a couple of things. And there's principal for a day for some of the schools, and that also, but he also has where you can do a week-long, a couple of week-long activities using different technology that they've gotten, one of which is with the laser.
Laser printer?
Laser printer, I think it's the, yeah, laser, the printing. And then there was another one where the kids go.
3D printer and cutter.
Yeah, and I, he had to explain it to me, and I wish I had, I gotta apologize, that's what I was looking up. But a couple of really neat experiences for the kids from Maple Shade if their parents are able to come. And I really hope we get some more families from Maple Shade because they're always underrepresented. So.
Mr. Ferret does a really great job of that. I think reported last year that he met with small groups of 5th graders through the entire year.
Yep.
And taught them all a little bit about the 3D printer and how to set that up and how to start a project.
Yes.
And so they had an opportunity to do some small projects throughout the entire year.
Yeah, no, he really, it's called Makey Makey is what it is. And it's a motherboard technology, and the kids do a whole week-long thing with it. It's just, that to me is specialized, to think outside of the box and you really do. And other great things too, from all those schools. Thank you.
Beth, tickets, how do we get tickets for you?
Tickets can go online if you go on through either Facebook or their website and purchase your tickets right online. It's just ELIF.
ELIF.org.
ELIF.org, yeah.
And their $75 piece?
Uh, they are.
They are.
And how many folks per table do you know? Is it eight or 10? You can, I think they'll do eight to 10. 10's the most that they want to do.
Perfect.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just had some follow-up discussions on our discussion last week about the high school potential project. Certainly some interest out there to have some follow-up discussions, so I just wanted to bring that to the attention of the rest of the board. And I'm sure we will do that in the near future.
Absolutely. Thank you. Ms. Trullio.
Similar conversations with stakeholders, just wanting to have follow-up conversations regarding the high school. I was also able to go to the Meadowbrook Bingo Night, which was wonderful, strong teacher presence, strong PTO presence. The kids were excited, so it was a really nice evening.
Mr. Fonseca.
MASC Board of Directors held the president's retreat earlier this month at the Delaney House, setting goals for this year. And the two big goals that we're going to work on are passing the Federal Foundation Budget Review Commission's recommendations for increased funding across the board. There is some momentum in both the Senate and the House this year, it seems, so, and we're awaiting the governor's budget, which probably will be out next week. Supposed to have some kind of education funding update in it. And an initiative that I'm directly involved in is the marketing of MASC. And a video was made at the conference, and I will get it when I'd like to do, and I'll talk to the chair. It's just, it's a short video, maybe play it during one of the meetings if I can, I can download it. And we'll talk about that. But it's just to show what we're doing with the marketing initiative is getting MASC's name out there and exactly what we do, who we represent, and to inform everybody as to what our mission is. So it's a great, it's an endeavor that, but I'm heavily involved in it. We'll continue to work on all of that stuff.
The governor has mentioned that education is a priority again this year.
He mentioned it. He, the executive director of MASC had a conversation with the education secretary, Peiser. And Peiser didn't give any real specifics, but there are some benchmark, there are some benchmarks in House One budget released by the, that will be released by the governor that are aiming towards what the Foundation Budget Review Commission's recommendations were. We're just not sure what it's going to look like yet.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Rady.
Thank you. So this past weekend, a group of students from East Long Meadow High School attended the 17, 79th Annual Model Congress at AIC in Springfield. And it was, it was a spectacular performance. Two students from East Long Meadow, Matt Wilson and Sam Neoney, managed to pass a bill, which is a huge accomplishment in terms of Model Congress, so that's great news to hear. And then on Thursday, January 10, the East Long Meadow High School Arts Program hosted their annual art show. And it was great to see all the artwork in the hallway throughout the day. And then really gave students an opportunity to like share their passions with the community. And then last week was midterms at the high school, so that marked the end of semester one. And now today marked the beginning of semester two. And it seems like the vibes and the overall morale of the high school are good as we head into our final semester of the year.
Thank you.
Do you know if the library got a decent amount of participation in the study nights?
Um, yes, I heard about the study nights. I'm not sure about the participation side of it, but I heard about them.
Free pizza?
Yeah.
And for follow-up, it was a bit, I did attend the art show, was quite innovative. I was surprised what, of the different types of paintings and designs that I saw. It was really neat. And I did attend the boys' basketball game, I'll just leave it at that.
Oh.
Okay, so moving along, opportunities for business to address the committee. Is there anybody else that would like to address the committee?
Good evening.
Good evening. And then just please state your name and address that.
Yes. My name is Jordan Lee Reese Siddig. I live at 159 Canterbury Circle, and I'm here to address the members of school committee and superintendent this evening to express my support. Um, okay, so I'm going to read a statement to make sure I stated the allocated time. And I haven't fully had a chance to proofread, so bear with me if I may edit on the slide here. I apologize. Okay. So when I came here last meeting, I didn't think I was going to speak. You should know that. But I ended up speaking. And at that moment, I was still going through Elizabeth Kula Ross's Stages of Grief from the news about the town's SOI for a new high school being declined by the MSBA. I was probably sitting at that moment somewhere between shock and anger. Those emotions were pretty raw. And were mostly directed towards the MSBA and our state-elected representatives for not supporting the efforts of this committee and the school district. I was frustrated as a parent because I told you I made a choice to build a home, raise my children here, and live in East Long Meadow because it's a vibrant community and its education offerings. But now, after, after being here and being in the high school, and I'm here pretty much three to four times a week because my children swim for the Marlins, the town rec team, and learning about the news of the rejection, I was completely just devastated, disappointed. I was disappointed that other towns where the elected officials live, or other towns that might be a bigger community with bigger economic opportunities in the surrounding area, where the politicians may have, you know, noticed, they've been present there and participated to support those towns and their projects. I felt like they didn't give you guys that support. I wondered just how much they really valued the people and voters of East Long Meadow. And, you know, despite saying that they supported our SOI. So however, with all that aside, I'm remiss that I failed to thank those of you that are in support of a new high school, and those of you that have been working on this effort diligently. In fact, I think Greg and I had a little exchange about that. I can't imagine that you weren't as equally as disappointed, but perhaps when we were, residents were notified last week, you may have been further along in the grief process because you knew a little bit before us. Especially because you had ownership in authoring the SOI. What I should have stated on record, but I did not due to my disappointment that night with MSBA's decision, is that we do have a great faculty, and we do have a great teacher staff here. And I'm thankful, I'm thankful that another resident expressed that last, last meeting. My children have personally had a wonderful academic experience thus far. They are safe, they're comfortable, and they're learning a lot. They really are. They're having a wonderful experience. They've had the most amazing teachers at Meadowbrook and Mountain View. I've been fortunate enough to volunteer both as a room parent at both schools, and I serve on the PTO at Meadowbrook. Thanks for the Bingo Night compliment. I did run that, we missed you this year, sir. And I've witnessed great things happening in the school, in those schools. I know many people are grateful for the efforts by the school district and from you as a committee. And yet, some of those same people are disappointed by the MSBA's outcome and their decision to decline your SOI for five consecutive years. Five, right? And you see, the high school in its current state is the first impression that many have of our town. When they have, you know, when you have a family member involved in sports or other extracurricular activities, and you're not in the high school yet, and you see others in the town, that's their first time coming here. And they have this first impression. And that impression by word of mouth is not great currently from other communities, more so, not just ours, but other communities. Some of you are nodding your head because you probably know this because your children are in sports or extracurricular activities, and you've been there. Just this past, like, few weeks, I've heard from some rec swim teams of other towns refusing to come to our site for swim meets because of our team facility when we use the indoor pool. We have a great outdoor pool. And I've been at meets when visiting teams, I've overheard comments such as referring to our high school, you know, as a dump. And this is the perception from other towns. And unfortunately, this has nothing to do with the effort of anybody in here. Nothing whatsoever. Doesn't mean we're not keeping the building safe, and I want to make that very clear. Doesn't mean you're not doing your jobs with maintaining the building. This is just the reality of what people are saying about East Long Meadow. And I'm sure none of you want that reputation, just like I don't live in here. Now here's what I've been learning though, since the last school committee meeting. And while more of us in the community have been engaging regularly about the situation with a sense of urgency, understanding that you have a short window to reapply, should everyone here vote to approve the process to go forward again. And I hope you do. Basically, there's a need and a desire for this to happen by residents in the town. If you didn't feel that support, really sorry. We should have been here six years ago with you. I think my kid was like two then, though, I'm sorry. People recognize there's a need, not just because of the shape of the building, its infrastructure and limiting, you know, its limitations, impending some program offerings that you could have. And then you mentioned some accreditation risks last, which I didn't even know about, so that was mentioned at the meeting. A new school provides new learning environments that open many new possibilities and afford the school district the ability to add those programs, or some of those programs that have been removed, you know, because you just don't have the sizing, the space anymore. A new learning environment retains your amazing teachers that are currently contributing because it shows they're appreciated and allows them to reach their potential as educators. A new learning environment opens up new possibilities of bringing in new academic and athletic competitive programs to retain students and faculty while possibly attracting new individuals who are the best of the best. That's what we want. That goes for attracting new students, teachers, and coaches. Unfortunately, I know a few families of talented athletes and swim that are coming up to high school age soon, and they're looking at private school. And I hate to hear that because they're, number one, I'm competitive, and I want to see us win. And I want to see the Spartans win. But they're great swimmers, and they're not coming here. That's sad. And my kids grew up with some of their kids, and that's really sad. Besides the emotional part of that, though, you know, East Long Meadow deserves them because I know academically, they're amazing. And they're talented, and we should be able to retain them in-house. They, they don't deserve to go, I mean, other schools don't deserve your homegrown talent. You've gotten them this far. So we have to find a way to find out why these students, I heard you guys mention last week, or I'm sorry, last meeting, not last week, it feels like a week, that there was an enrollment decline potentially one of the reasons why we may have been rejected.
Not a decline, more of a flattening.
Okay. So I would, thank you for clarifying that. I would love to know, where are those students going and why? And if we could ever find that research out and how, as a group? And I say that as a group because I want us to collaborate with you guys as residents. However we can offer bandwidth to support you, that's what we want to do. Now, we were emotional last week because, again, we were going through those stages newly. I think a new high school is critical to the sustainability of our vibrant community. A new facility is going to help retain residents in the area. I have like three more pages, but I think you guys get it. Our goals are simple. We hope they are shared with each of you. We want to attract new residents and retain existing ones to sustain a vibrant town and community, grow enrollment by improving the learning environment of the high school, creating a space that is safe, healthy, green, and green, because I thought that was an excellent suggestion by a gentleman that spoke last week, while meeting the demands of today's technology to compete academically in the state and enter the eligibility period granted by the MSBA for the new high school. Lastly, we want to help and support in receiving the town council's vote for funding a feasibility study should, you know, we be entered into that eligibility period. And closing a new high school is a place where all generations of our town come together to create family memories. It advances us academically, enriches the lives for all residents in East Long Meadow, and contributes to everyone's property value. I ask you tonight, please vote yes this evening for our superintendent, Mr. Gordon Smith, to submit a new SOI, and thank you for allowing me to speak.
Can I just provide a copy of that to the chair?
Certainly. I skipped a couple pages, but yes.
Okay, I appreciate, if you, if you can give that to me.
Be my pleasure.
Thank you, I appreciate that. And also, I think it's a good segue, we are voting tonight, and a lot has transpired in the past two weeks, Delaney, so I think you'll hear how we are progressing forward. We're taking it step by step, and you're giving us our next target date, which is February 12. We met with the chair of the town council. That is when the town council will vote on the SOI, February 12. And we're going to provide it to the town council in this building a week from today at 4:30, so the town council members know what they're voting on. So that's kind of our first steps to kind of get the information out. And then I'm being very tentative now, we're also looking probably in the information gathering stage before we submit in April. We're looking, maybe doing some kind of informational sessions, getting some feedback from the residents, what we can do, what they can do, what we can do together. So your, your comments will well receive and right of. And I would like a copy if you have a chance.
Sir, can I polish it up?
Sure.
I've always been afraid, have we? Oh, you know it too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Wow, we have the time. Have you?
So if I can move, I'll move to number five, 5.1.1, MSBA Statement of Interest, Vote for New High School. Mr. Smith, that took some of your thunder away, but if you want to add anything here, please.
So as we discussed with the parents last week and with everybody on the school committee, there are a number of formal steps you need to take when you submit a statement of interest each year. One of those formal steps is that the school committee has to vote in favor of submitting a new statement of interest. And they have very specific language, which is in your packet, that you need to follow. Similarly, as we just heard, the town council will also have to vote in favor of submitting a statement of interest. And so after the tour, we've invited them to a tour, as you just mentioned, Mr. Ficero, we hope to get on their agenda for February 12. In the last two weeks, we've had a lot of quite productive discussions, starting with the meeting that took place two weeks ago with the parents that came out in support. Mr. Crucial, I think just walked in, and I have had a couple of conversations. The statement of interest is now up on the webpage. So it's under District Information. It says, "MSBA Statement of Interest for ELHS 2018." The group that submitted emails all got a copy of the statement of interest, as well as just sort of some of the steps we're going to be taking in the next few weeks. But our discussions over the last two weeks have centered on possibly looking for people who are not only experienced with the process of the MSBA, but also in the field of construction and design, and looking at, are there ways to tweak some of the areas of our statement of interest? And those discussions have somewhat brought us full circle back to Sims Maney and McKee Associates who originally helped us create the facility study and the master plan. And we may be able to work with them somewhat on a consultation basis and have them help us not only update certain pieces of the facility study. Now, if you remember, the facility study took about a year and three months to fully accomplish, so we don't have that kind of timeframe, so this will be a very consolidated timeframe. But certainly Sims Maney and McKee, very experienced with the MSBA process. I have yet to go to any MSBA function where one of their associates is not in the audience, or for that matter, speaking at some point. And so I think that could be quite a productive avenue as we look to revise this statement of interest.
Mr. Smith, have a question. Are they affiliated with any of the schools and have gotten approval through the MSBA that you're going to?
Yes. Yeah. So Sims Maney and McKee, the last project, I could be wrong on this, but the last project I know of was West Springfield High School. They were the design firm, architectural firm for West Springfield High School. Now, they may have others in this area as well, but that was the one when we were doing our facility study that was, at the time, close to being completed, and we had a full tour and kind of walked us through after you are invited into, there are a number of steps that we were just outlining. So the first thing is to get your statement of interest approved, in, and then eventually invited into the eligibility period. Then at that point, we would have to go through what they call initial certification compliance. Then we'd have to form a building committee. Then we would start to look at and work with the MSBA on a eligibility, or excuse me, feasibility study funding agreement. If all of that is accomplished, and that would involve both school committee and town council, then eventually you're invited into what they call the feasibility study phase. That is where, at that point, we would be actually appropriating money for a feasibility study. And yet, in each of these phases, and they're all on the website if people want to look for more information, there are a number of structured steps that you have to follow. But that would be the next big moment for the town in terms of actually appropriating funding towards this project, which means we'd be into their process and hopefully going along similarly to what we've done in their accelerated repair process, which very much matches its name. It's very much accelerated compared to the core program.
Okay. Okay, so we are at 5.1.1, MSBA Statement of Interest, Vote for New High School. Do I have a motion?
Well, we got to, I'll take a stab at this.
Read it line for line.
Okay. I move, having convened in an open meeting on Tuesday, January 22, 2019, prior to the SOI submission closing date, the East Long Meadow School Committee of the Town of East Long Meadow, in accordance with its charter, bylaws, and ordinances, has voted to authorize a superintendent to submit to the Massachusetts School Building Authority the statement of interest form dated on or before April 12, 2019, for the East Long Meadow High School located at 180 Maple Street, which describes and explains the following deficiencies and priority categories for which an application may be submitted to the Massachusetts School Building Authority in the future. Priority three, loss of accreditation. Priority five, replacement, renovation, or modernization of school facility systems such as roofs, windows, boilers, heating, and ventilation systems to increase energy and conservation and decrease energy-related costs in a school facility. Priority seven, replacement of or an addition, or addition to obsolete buildings in order to provide for a full range of programs consistent with the state and approved local requirements. And hereby further specifically acknowledges that by submitting this statement of interest form, the Massachusetts School Building Authority in no way guarantees the acceptance, acceptance or approval of an application, the awarding of a grant, or any other funding commitment from the Massachusetts School Building Authority, or commits the East Long Meadow Public School District to filing an application for funding with the Mass, Massachusetts School Building Authority.
Well done, Mr. Fonseca. Do I have a second?
I have a second.
Any discussion? This will roll call vote. I'll start, Ms. Marcy Boucher.
Yes.
Mr. Fonseca.
Yes.
Ms. Trullio. Mr. Thompson, vice chair.
Yes.
Chair votes, yes, also. Serena and Ms. Salati will go through, going through the process again. So our next relevant date is a week from today at 4:30, when we take town council through here, and then February 12, when we have town council vote. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Moving along, always to the, to the really exciting and, and.
Yes.
Assistant superintendent for business report, let's take us to those gifts, please.
Okay, so the first one is 5.2.1, and this is from Mountainville, I'm sorry, Mountainview, thank you. They received an anonymous donation of $200, and Principal Elaine Santinello is requesting the school committee approval to accept these funds, which will be deposited into the Mountain View gift account.
I move to accept the $200 gift to Mountain View School for, yeah, that's it.
Do I have a second? Second. Discussion? All those in favor?
Yes.
Are you unanimous? Keep going.
Okay. 5.2.2, another request from Mountain View. They received a $50 gift from the PTO and is requesting school committee approval to accept these funds to be deposited again into the Mountain View gift account.
I move that we accept the Mountain View gift, the beneficiary of $50 for the school toolbox for students to the Mountain View School gift account.
I have a motion, I have a second.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Yes.
Are you opposed? Are you unanimous? Okay, keep going.
And the last one, 5.2.3, and this is for Maple Shade. They have received a check for $50 from Diane Tiago in honor of Jamie Tudren to be used to purchase library books. Principal Michael Ferret is looking for school committee approval to deposit this check into the Maple Shade gift account for that purpose.
All right, this is a sad, do you have a motion, please?
Move to accept the Maple Shade gift beneficiary of $50 from Diane Tiago to purchase library books at Maple Shade in honor of Jamie Tudren.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion? How was it, favor?
Yes.
Yes. Opposed. Thank you very much. Okay, Ms. Boyer, we have a 5.2, 5.2.4 Quarterly Financial Report.
That's correct. So attached is a spreadsheet that is designed as a financial update for the FY19 school budget as of the second quarter dated December 31st, 2018. This report also includes the grants and your revolving accounts. In looking at page four, all of the salary accounts, I know I kind of, you look at page four, you'll see the salary accounts are at the top section of the page. You'll notice that there are a few salary items that do have a large balance. These balances are due to outstanding payments such as athletic coaches, advisors, department heads, retirement benefit payments that went through in January, and a few leave of absences. Any questions on that section?
The leave of absences would, are those are the teacher, that's the teacher balances?
Correct, yes. On the bottom section of page four, that's the expense side of the budget, and you'll see that the majority of the funds have been expended or encumbered. These are, these accounts are on target to where we need to be at this time in the year. Do we have any questions on any of that section on the bottom?
Looks like we're pretty healthy right now.
We are looking very good. So if you go to page five, that is your grants and your revolving accounts, which are pretty straightforward, your grants. We've gone over in the past, you see the grant amount and what has been expended year-to-date, the funds encumbered, and you're available. Know that I'm always looking at these and working with the person in charge of the grant, whether that be Dr. Welch for special ed grants, or Heather Brown for your title grants, the Title I, Title II, et cetera. Any questions on any of the grants at all? The bottom section is your revolving accounts. Again, these are pretty straightforward here. You will see there's a few that I wanted to bring to your attention. The athletic revolving accounts, you're going to see that there's 15,571 deficit there, but that is only because deposits have not been posted yet in munis. There is like a two to three week turnaround time for that to happen. That's the same thing for the circuit breaker. The second quarterly payment for circuit breaker came in on January 1st, so that you will see that on your third quarter financial statement, that that goes to a positive balance. School lunch, I did speak with Lori Paul. I know you're always interested in where they're at, so I did get a little informational sheet from her that she just brought to me after the packets have been dispersed. And again, this is just some information about where they're at, and there's items that they have already purchased and items that they're working on purchasing. Over on the right-hand side, on the right-hand side, you'll see some items there. Three additional terminals for Burjland Park will be ordered for $5,500. I mean, there's a few items here. I don't know if anyone has specific questions about that at all. Lori's always available. She did want to let you know at the very bottom there on the right-hand side of that informational sheet, she did say even with the government shutdown, child nutrition programs will be funded until March. And she says, but I am very cautious and conservative on spending, just to let you know that that was her mindset on this.
Why are they only funded until March?
Well, that's what she's being told, that she's funded for...
That's a message coming out of the federal government.
Because of the shutdown?
Yeah.
Yeah. They'll catch up, though, when they finally get their act together.
Yes, yes, they will.
All right, so we have money that we can at least support our kids.
Yes, we do, so we have very healthy, yeah, absolutely.
So we would supplement where the free and reduced lunch may start to weigh in. Similar with the federal government, food stamps.
Yeah, well, this is all part of the SNAP program, and it's all tied in. And they've already said that when the funding runs out, that whatever is not funded will be back paid, along with everything else, once the government gets up and is up and running again.
Exactly. So I would like to remind you that it is imperative to remember that the balances provided are a snapshot in time and are changing constantly. Are there any questions that anyone has?
How about a motion, then?
You need to accept the quarterly financial report for the second quarter.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, thank you. Any further discussion? How was it, favor, please say yes?
Yes.
Opposed? We are unanimous there. Our preliminary budget request, and this is now 6.1, and Mr. Smith.
Okay. In your packet, you have a sheet that looks similar to this, probably without the highlighting. And what it gives you is a look, preliminary look, at the budget requests that have been discussed and come through the leadership team in the buildings, as well as at the district level. Just some background information, our current FY19 budget is $30,307,688. We've traditionally, over the last five years, received somewhere between a 1.8 and about a 2.4, that's been the range, the high being the 2.4 percent increase from the town during the entire budget development process. So a 2 percent increase would be about $606,154. 3 percent, if things were going to be joyous and festive, would be a $909,231 increase. So all told, because I didn't give you a total on these requests, it's about $266,000 worth of requests. That's just some background information. I figured then I'll take you through each individual request.
Can I just chime in there to just, so everyone listening at home, that amount that Mr. Smith just said does not include any contractual increases. This is just what the leadership team has requested.
Right. And very informal discussions have been that the budget development process will be a little bit different this year and with the town, and certainly that they want to know and thoroughly understand contractual obligations and what level services represent, and then obviously any new requests. So as you can see, as you go through this sheet, the leadership team has tried to stay within the theme that our goals have taken on over the last two years, sort of centered on technology for support of our classrooms and the curriculum, and increasing our social and emotional education and support throughout the district. So if you look at that first request, this is actually requesting a social and emotional special education teacher at Meadowbrook. Remember, last year, we added a teacher at the middle level at the time, at the middle school. The middle school tends to be the place where we've exhausted, as a district, many different supports, and as we come together as a team, it's often where there's a decision made that an out-of-district placement might be needed. Now, with that said, adding a social and emotional classroom and teacher at the middle level, I did add in your packet a look at what we've been able to accomplish just this year at the middle school. So before going into Meadowbrook's request, just a quick look at, so currently, we have a classroom that is serving basically sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, although right now you're seeing predominantly seventh and eighth graders in that classroom being supported. In the classroom, the teacher and a paraprofessional most likely are handling directly, in some cases, teaching subjects such as math and English and social studies. We have currently six students that may have one or all of those academics within the social and emotional classroom. In addition to that, we have 16 students who are being mentored or supported through other type of meetings with the social and emotional teacher, and we're running two daily lunch groups with a total of 11 students. So more or less, that classroom in some way is supporting roughly 33 students at this time. Impressive data at the bottom there in terms of just the change that they're seeing, this was prior to the holiday break. So last year, prior to the holiday break, they had 203 disciplinary notes. This year, we're at 130, so that's a 35 percent improvement. Last year at this time, we had 10 suspensions. Currently, we're at three, although we may have another one, something popped up this week, so we may be at four. The student assistance meetings, this is really at the request, it can be at the request of a counselor, a teacher, an administrator, and then a group of educators come around and try to problem solve, that's what a student assistance meeting. So last year at the time, we had 10. This year, we're, excuse me, last year at the time, we had five. This year, we're doing more problem solving, and we've had 10 of those meetings and seem to be getting effective solutions to help support students. So the communication with this program and probably this individual has improved within the building. So teachers are seeking out his assistance, and he's working closely with the adjustment counselor and the guidance counselor. And then art of teaching professional development sessions, we have increased that, where we have had four so far to date. So those are just some pretty good, I think, benchmarks to this point with how we're using a social and emotional teacher and utilizing his skills at the middle level. Going to Meadowbrook...
Can I ask a question about that first?
Absolutely.
Sure. So is the educator's schedule set up in such a way at Burjland that allows for those teacher conversations, those leadership opportunities within the building, and those consultations with the counselors?
At the beginning of the year, he had no students in terms of academics in his classroom. And so there was a lot of building relationships, teachers, counselors, as well as after they had set and defined a structure of how to refer students. First, they had, they go to a student assistance meeting, and then if there are pieces of the social and emotional classroom that might be good in terms of supporting that child, then we'll put that in place. And so since the beginning of the year, we've now added a number of students.
So is that position set up so that it's meant to be more of, I don't want to call it a coach, but one where part of the time is spent with students, but the other part is kind of built into whether it's a prep schedule or something, so they have those points of contact, or is this person going to the...
Right, so to the best of their ability, they're going to try to keep times open where he can consult with other staff members. Right now, they're able to do that, but just as you're saying, as you start to have students that are in there for more than one, two, three periods, it takes up then the gentleman's time. That would be where we'd have to become more creative, and maybe you cover with, if you have a paraprofessional who's been working very closely, you cover for a half hour, 20 minutes, and you can make, because those are paying dividends.
Yes.
He's gone into other classrooms and he's observed teachers who have had challenging times with students and offered recommendations there.
Guidance.
Yeah, and so that's great to see. Sometimes that's much easier, obviously, than asking your assistant principal to come in and do the same thing.
And are the suspensions noted here external, or, because I just didn't know what is the difference between internal versus external suspensions?
Basically, at the middle school, it's all external.
External, okay.
With the exception, if they can, we do have what they call a Saturday detention program.
Okay.
And so what might have been deemed, you know, if we had an internal suspension program, internal, they try to go with Saturday when they can. Not necessarily greeted with a lot of joyousness by the student or the family.
Now, just to interject, I, you know, and I know that we'll be taking these ideas to the town council as they inform their budget and stuff like that, but it really is important, because when you sit here and you do the warrant, and you look at the money that is spent outpacing students, and even if you could, maybe some you can't, but even if you could take two of those students in any given year, they're more than going to pay for a teacher, a professional, to come in and do what they have to do. Even with where I am, you know, we have students where they just find, even if it's just a pair of, that one point person that a student has, when you see them losing it, you just stop everything, you go up to them, and sometimes it's all they need. And to have somebody that really knows what they're doing, it's like me, it's a good thing.
If you can build certain skills within the students throughout their different grade levels...
Copy mechanisms and stuff, and it will pay, it will tenfold pay us back in the end.
Well, this is so new that everybody is trying to figure it out.
You're right.
And it's almost like you're doing it on the fly, because it's, like I said, it's just, it's evolved in the last three to five years, and all of a sudden, school districts are recognizing it. And to Beth your point, if we get, if we get our staff trained, we could save a ton of money.
And it's different than guidance. Not that guidance isn't there, but it's more embedded, as opposed to getting pulled at just lunchtime, or, you know, they've got enough to deal with with their regular casings.
Right. It has a number of aspects to it. It could be lesson planning, as well as classroom management, but it's maybe how you build the lesson, implement the lesson that can help keep students from having a challenging time.
Dr. Allen and Connor Martin are very, very happy, you know, to hear them talk about. It's really made quite a difference.
And they're actually very skilled at this type of work themselves. So with that, as a good segue, actually, so Meadowbrook is looking at this, and at Meadowbrook, we have two technically guidance counselors, but we've done some creative hiring over the years, and the reality is that one of our guidance counselors also is licensed as an adjustment counselor, so has a skill set that we've been talking about and does an incredible job. Our other counselor also is a board-certified behavior analyst and also has a ton of experience, and they've been working really well with the administration and the teachers over the years. I think they've been together maybe for the last four, maybe five years. And we're finding that even with that type of teamwork, as you can read, I won't read all of what Mrs. Dakin wrote here, but to give you an idea, you know, out of 103 IEPs, 20 of these IEPs have identified an element where there is social and emotional need. This year alone, and this is the highest in my tenure as superintendent, they've had to issue nine external suspensions and one internal suspension. Internal suspension, to back up to your question, that really is not a formal program, it's more that then the person's with the counselor most of the day.
Most of the day.
Yeah. But at Meadowbrook, you'll get more of that. We're trying to obviously do anything we can to keep from having to move a student out for a given period of time. But they've gotten to nine suspensions. They've also had, unfortunately, situations where they've had to call the Behavioral Network Mobile Crisis Unit and have them come in. So they're seeing some challenging behaviors. And what she goes on to outline is that at Mountain View, we do have a transition program that has an element of social and emotional support and education to it. I think we have to do a, we have to look at that and see how we can support it and maybe even transition, no pun intended, even more so. And then we would possibly, if this position is something that we can achieve in this budget, have a program that's going from Meadowbrook to Mountain View to Burjland. And the reason I say Mountain View is we've split our substantially separate programs, and so each building, Maple Shade, Mountain View, has a substantially separate program or more in their building. And so we'll look at that, too. I have a meeting in the next few days with Dr. Welch, with Mrs. Santinello, and with Mrs. Campbell to review all of this and see how can we start to look at that program. So I think I hit all the highlights for Meadowbrook. The budget amount we have in there right now is a master's 10, 10 steps, figuring that you're probably going to need to get someone who's experienced in this work, and so we want to be realistic in terms of what we may or may not be hiring at what level.
Would there be opportunities for the administrators at both Burjland and Meadowbrook to look at the posting that attracted the candidate to Burjland Park, so they can ensure that they're looking for those same type of qualifications?
We'll share that, as well as this information we're sharing. And interestingly enough, it's sort of a segue that goes to later in February, and you may have seen this in your work in Springfield, we actually have received some very good data from DESI through the MCAS of all things. And so we're going to share some of that information at our mid-cycle review and see if we can, throughout the year, build on the positive and start to figure out and plan for areas of challenge. Yes, but they certainly would share that.
It would just be interesting to see how especially the schedule on elementary level would be set up to allow for those leadership-type opportunities to ensure that the educator is qualified...
Has the opportunity to...
To actually have that larger impact that we're seeing, because the elementary schedule's so different than a middle school schedule, so trying to ensure that...
You almost are going to have to go to somewhat of a coaching model.
Mm-hmm. And just making sure the position's written in such a way, and that you're capturing the right candidate, because if not, you could potentially miss out on that larger impact they are able to see at the middle school right now.
Right. And as you know, it's all in the presentation, so we're going to have to work at that before we start presenting to staff around how this might work. So that's one from Meadowbrook. I'm just basically going through what was submitted, in no particular order. Obviously, for Meadowbrook, that was their top-level priority, but that doesn't necessarily mean that it rises to the top of all of your priority. That's obviously something for discussion. Then the high school is also looking at this, and they're looking at, similar to what we were just discussing, the fact that we're having success at Burjland with this program, and soon those students will be moving to the high school, so it does make some sense, obviously, to look at staffing a similar-type program at the high school. Just quick highlights, they have, out of 52 504 plans, 20... Just quick highlights, they have out of fifty-two, five oh four plans, twenty-six of them are specific to social and emotional needs. Out of one hundred and twenty-seven IEPs, or there are one hundred and twenty-seven IEPs that have a social and emotional goal and/or accommodation in them, and that there are specifically twenty-three IEPs where the main disability is social and emotional. So we are seeing a rise in this, we've seen, as you saw last year, as we discussed, that we have an increase of students, at the time, and probably still true now, leaving and going to out-of-district placements somewhere in the middle grades, more often in the middle grades than in elementary grades or high school grades. But if we can, to Mrs. Marjorie Boucher's point, keep students in our district, I think they, they have a better educational program and get to continue with their peers and people who have gone through the grades.
Well, I think that's one of the keys, is to go, continue with your peers, there's a comfort level there, as opposed to, and I get the out-of-district placement necessity, but it's strange, and you, you know, you want, you want these kids to feel as comfortable as possible.
And sadly, their reality is, as much as the demand is there, you don't have a ton of quality programs for social and emotional disabilities, and so that's rather frustrating. You have more in the eastern end of the state, but we certainly don't want to be having poor students travel two hours each way to get to a program in the eastern end of the state.
Can I just add that if we were to be able to keep one child here, it would pay for three-quarters of that salary, I just would like you to know that.
So, those are two, at Meadowbrook, top priority, and at the high school, top priority. High school also, along the same lines, with curriculum for social and emotional support, their second priority was, they would like to bring in and have our students participate, and probably at least two staff members participate in the Anti-Defamation League's Peer Mentor Program, and it's through the World of Difference Program, and it's a two-year process of training peer leaders and training advisors, faculty advisors, eight thousand the first year, and then fifty-five hundred the second year, so for the two, thirteen thousand, five hundred. I know that an ELEAF grant, I believe, was submitted as a way of possibly looking at an alternative way of funding this, I've not heard on that piece, so, but wanted to bring that to your attention. This program has had success, I've actually seen it in action in the Hingham Public Schools back in nineteen ninety-nine and two thousand, and it had such good success at the high school level, that at the time, I had just become the assistant principal at the middle school in Hingham, and I was able to bring peer leaders down to speak to our eighth graders and go through some of the basics that they were doing at the high school level, so as our students transitioned to the high school, they were getting a feel for sort of the social norms that were being put in place at Hingham High School. It's a very good program, I'm sure it's evolved since I last had some experience with it. This is coming from the district, but really, it's looking at specifically our two, three through five schools, and in line with the technology support, and the fact that last year, we were implementing digital literacy and computer science state standards that really go from K until grade twelve, all grade levels have to be thinking about how we're teaching our students to understand and be more digitally, excuse me, literate, as well as eventually move into some computer programming and computer science-type activities and courses. As we do that, and are utilizing more technology throughout all grades, as well as, as you know, as a committee, we're looking to try to figure out a way to get over that final piece and purchase enough machines, and also have a renewal process in place to be a one-to-one district, if we can, grades two through twelve. However, our two, three through five schools are the closest to it right now, and when I say that, what that means is, it's not a one-to-one formal program where every child has the computers, taking it home, we have an agreement about that between the home and the school, what it means is, we have put together and purchased over the years enough machines that no classroom is having a challenge should they want to use computers for their students, you know, for the full day or a portion of the day, they're not having the same challenges that we used to have, where you would look at the schedule and say, oh my gosh, I would like to plan this lesson for tomorrow, but I can't get computers until a week from Tuesday. That's no longer the case, we're actually pretty close to having a machine for every student in the three through five schools. The challenge is, the machines are somewhat mixed, it's, we would like to move towards Chromebooks for the one-to-one program, and then have the availability at different grade levels of different types of machines, but right now, it's a mix, so you have some Apple, some Chromebooks, and probably even in some cases, maybe some iPads that are in that mix. So this is for instructional technology specialist, some, as a staff member we just introduced at the high school, and is having incredible success at the high school on a daily and weekly basis, really, I don't know, Jake, if you have seen Mr. Zilch around, but he's working with our teachers, where in some cases, week to week, he might be co-teaching, if technology's being used in a specific way for the first time, he might be co-teaching with a teacher, he also runs what he calls tech cafes, and he invites, he does it all through a Google Classroom setup, where he sets up his Google Classroom for the year, and has all the staff members that wish to be part of it, and that's how he updates them and tells them what's coming in the tech cafe. He has presented at every half-day professional development for high school staff, and presented at the full day for all ELPS staff that signed up for his workshop on the November, I think it was sixth, Professional Development Day, and he's signed up to present again on our full day in March. So, he is having great success, and I think will continue to see rewards and benefits from that, and so we're looking to initiate and implement that at the elementary level as well. Then the second one from the district, this is actually coming from last year, as we looked, this committee, probably five years ago, had the great insight to formalize our curriculum renewal process and actually put a budget line item in place, which at the time was a hundred thousand dollars, and so we have a formal cycle where every academic department, through a five-year process, goes through and has an opportunity to implement new materials, work with those new materials, align to standards if standards have been revised, and then ultimately, when they get to two years from the end of that five-year cycle, they go into a full-fledged study. Are the materials and the textbooks that we're using best supporting our students for the way we're teaching the content today? As they do that, what we're finding is, specifically, or especially when we have, say, three academic departments up in a given year, we're not able to, with a hundred thousand, cover all that they identify, so then we have to go into a prioritized list and work with them on that. And so what we're looking to do, similar to last year, but unfortunately, we were not able to achieve this through the budget last year, is add fifty thousand dollars to that curriculum line item. So those are the requests that have come through leadership team discussions and building discussions, and certainly, open it up for discussion with all of you, and this is not a meeting where we have to take a vote and prioritize, it's really just, at this point, informational and fact-finding.
So will we revisit this again, I'm sure, in the future?
I would think so.
Start of our budget process.
I just commend the team, because everything you've presented so far, in terms of the district's priorities and goals, is aligned with what the next asks are in terms of the budget process, so I think that, going back to that graphic you showed, I think in October.
It's really been a pretty good year from that standpoint.
But it is, and you can see the alignment, which speaks to the communication with us, and speaks to communication with the administrators at the buildings, in terms of what the district's priorities are, and how best to achieve them by working together to move forward, so that's great.
Thank you.
Okay, new business, seven point one, we've seen this before, the high school science team would like a field trip out of state to Situage, Rhode Island, North City, Rhode Island.
So these are additional trips that were not in their first presentation, as you can see from the letter from Dr. Flanagan, and certainly from Mr. Van Buren.
I move that we approve the high school science team Situate High School Vex Robotics Tournament Trip in North Situate, Rhode Island, February third, twenty nineteen.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Out of favor, please say yes.
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 Opposed, we are unanimous. Seven point two, I think this is a counterploner request, if I'm correct.
Yes.
If they make it to the big time.
This is, if they achieve in some of these tournaments, and have teams qualify, they have a few teams participating in each of these trips, they're hoping that a few of those teams will qualify to go to the championships later on in April.
Have a motion.
Can I ask one question first?
Sure.
And they're comfortable, I mean, given that this is April twenty-fourth, in terms of the kids being able to make up MCAS testing, that.
They have to set a plan, they actually, in order to do that, they have to set an educational plan before they go, and so, we're talking to high school students, so basically, Mr. Van Buren, guidance counselor, administration, and team of teachers have to figure out what does that mean.
Cool. Move to approve the high school science team twenty nineteen, Vex Robotics World Championship Trip to Louisville, Kentucky, April twenty-fourth through the twenty-seventh, twenty nineteen, pending successful performance at the Vex Robotics Southern New England Championships from March, second through third.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
A second, yeah.
Further discussion?
Do we have younger kids that might be in this situation?
We have, yeah, we may have the same type of requests coming soon, from the middle school and Mountain View and Maple Shade, yeah, each year, more students are getting involved.
Great.
Yeah, we're sending more teams.
Good, that's all.
I think we just have the second so far.
We need a vote.
Yeah, we need a vote. Out of favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, we are unanimous. I think that's so time, huh, there's hardly been one. Have a motion, do adjourn.
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
Second. Thank you, Jake, thank you, Joanna from Elcat, and thank you, Jake, so thank you all, vote, all is adjourned?
Yes.